We'll start this meeting at 6:34. We reconvene from an executive session and we're here in open session. And there is no one in the public, so there's no public input. And there's no student report because school has not yet started. We'll continue business, so new business. We are going over the school committee goals that we set up in our last meeting.
I have a few questions on this one.
Certainly.
Do you want to go page by page, or do you want to, how do you want to?
Yeah, I would, from the start.
I don't have any questions on the first page.
All right. Okay. Anyone else on the first page, anything that you see that was missing or anything? All right, good. Scott?
On page two, under financial and asset management, three activities, a budget. The food service workers' contract is mentioned in both six and nine. Do we need, do we need both of them? Nine says support the process to negotiate a new contract, and six is successfully negotiate an employment contract with.
I think you do.
Oh, I thought we were going to do all.
I think you do need both.
Three.
So is one, is one for the, for the workers and one's for the actual contract with the company?
And I'll ask Michael to weigh in. But I believe I have it correct that item six is an employment contract with the workers, and item nine would be the contract.
Okay, that's what I didn't know, is the contract with the company up as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Correct, that is correct.
Right, and the labor contract is up as well.
Right, so we are negotiating a labor contract and putting out to bid for the.
Yeah, that's what I didn't know, I didn't, it wasn't sure.
That's a good question.
Okay. That was my only comment on that one, that page.
I noted at the bottom of the page, the board of selectmen term outdated.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, what is it, the?
But we don't, do we change it yet, or do we wait until it's changed in the bylaws?
The town meeting approved it, right?
I thought it was approved.
There was a, it hasn't been approved by the state yet.
Oh, that's.
Or the, or even a vote, I think.
Oh, note for the policy subcommittee, because I think we started changing it.
Yeah, we did, we did start changing it in some of those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
On the educational program page, number eight, the expansion of the freshman advisory program, did we vote to keep that in or to remove it? We had some discussion on that, but I didn't know if we thought we wanted to keep that in or not.
I think that's why we use the word explore.
Explore.
Right.
We'll look back to.
I mean, we can keep it in, I don't.
Yeah, you can see that, I think that's right, Mrs. Bowwell, because if you look at what the edit is.
Right.
I think we had a discussion about whether or not we felt like there should be some.
We wanted to work with.
The high school administration to see if there was maybe a possibility, was, what was the need, because I think I'm recalling making reference to a survey that was done about connectedness.
Yeah, and I think the idea was that we didn't want to make the decision right there.
At the, at the policy sub, I mean, at the goals workshop, I think you're right. But we changed it a little bit to kind of explore the possibility or the need.
I didn't remember what the final outcome was, so.
That's my, that's my recollection.
Did we talk about maybe expanding it down into eighth grade, so that they're aware of it, or was that something else we were talking about?
I don't remember that.
No, I'm not recalling that. Like a deposition.
I think it had to do with social or emotional. That's what I'm thinking it was. Okay, any?
So do people want to keep it then, explore?
I think it's worth it.
I don't think there's any harm in.
No, definitely not.
Okay.
Let me go back just about the select board, maybe we could just clarify with the town exactly where that stands. Is it approved, has it been approved yet, is it official or not, I guess? Because I am, I am confused about whether it needs to have a vote, vote from the legislature or approval.
I can, I can look into that with the town administrator.
I think, I think at the finance planning team meeting, they did mention at the beginning of that meeting, I think that was the meeting where they said, even though it's been voted at town meeting, they're still waiting for state approval.
Okay.
And.
I'll see if I can find out something.
Yeah, and I don't know if they knew what the timeline was.
Would there be any reason, would there be any reason the state wouldn't allow it?
No.
Then I wouldn't see any problem with moving forward.
Yeah.
Going over the policies and correcting the words.
And again, at the time that these are adopted, they're still called Board of Selectmen, so we can always just change it next year, these are just the goals, the policies I'm more worried about.
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking in terms of the policies, yeah, but it's probably not, as you say, it's probably not very critical, but.
Yeah. On the family and community relations, the support the superintendent's goal of establishing a parent university program, did you have that now, I thought we had made a change to, you know.
Yeah, probably should continue.
Promoting, you know, the annual or something like that, I. Same thing with the support the research implementation of a school district mobile app, is that live yet or not, no?
It's, no, I'm going to give you an up, it's not, I'm going to give you an update tonight under my report.
Okay, the parent university happened last year, so I think that needs to be, the language needs to be changed on that one.
How about, are you comfortable with continuing? The parent university program?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, just get rid of the word establishing, really, support the superintendent's goal of a parent university, an annual parent university program.
There you go, I like that better, support the.
Of an annual?
Yeah.
What are you doing now, huh?
The goal's high.
The app. I think we're very close, I mean, I almost think you could just delete that in its entirety if you trust that, I'll have that ready in the next few weeks.
I'm sure Mike Tyrell will keep you on your toes.
Oh, he's working that boy hard.
Might as well.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think we can keep it as like just support the app or whatever, like the continuation of or something. We haven't seen it work yet, and so I, I just, I just know from whenever we've done any tech things at my office, whenever they say it's going to be implemented, it's usually a couple of months later than that, so.
I guess it really depends on whether you're going to care about utilization, like, are you going to promote utilization of it? Because once it's implemented, it's implemented, it's all about utilization after that.
It's kind of like the websites too, like, do we hear the level of updates, followers, downloads, so.
I like the mention of it in some respect, but I think it can.
Can you give me some language, support the?
Ms. Bowwell?
Support the ongoing utilization of the school district mobile app.
Or perhaps even the final implementation and ongoing utilization.
Yeah, you could add final implementation since it's not done yet.
Support the implementation and ongoing utilization of the, of the school district's mobile app.
Yep.
When Mr., when Mr. Tyrell is not working on it anymore, do we have a tech team beyond that?
I'm going to give you an update tonight.
Okay, we can go to that later.
I promise to answer that question. Remind me.
Those are just my, my questions.
Okay.
Should we just hold off until where there is a couple of changes, we'll just bring it in next week, month, or meeting?
Sure, so if you're okay, what I'll do is I'll make these changes, produce a new document for the September 10th meeting, and if those changes are acceptable, probably then it's probably good that Mr. Webster be here at that meeting.
Then we'll take a vote.
To adopt them at that time, okay.
Sounds good. All right, on to the first reading of how to get rid of a school committee. I mean, I'm sorry.
This has generated a lot of questions at the central office, I'd have to tell you.
There's been a lot of discussion.
Who were you trying to kick?
What's happening, nothing's happening.
If you don't show up to the August 27th meeting.
I saw that, I was like, gosh.
We have, we have, we have goals.
Yeah, there's these goals and there's others.
Yeah, we have goals.
If you don't show up to the August 27th meeting, you are removed.
Yeah, right.
Mel's watching on TV celebrating right now.
Diane or Rich, would you like to give a overall?
I'd be happy to, sure. It's pretty simple, as you can see, there's a lot of text crossed out, and that's because it's much easier to just reference this chapter and section of the town charter. It's usually a best practice anyway, so that if they ever change the text, we wouldn't have to, you know, maintain this as well. And so that's the, that's basically why you're seeing the removal of all this text.
All right.
And because it was such a large change, we felt it needed a first reading.
Yeah, and I would, I would add that I suspect that we'll find a lot of other examples like this, it just seems to make more, rather than have a policy that is the, tries to be the exact duplicate of something that's in the charter, it just makes more sense to refer to the charter, just cleaner and simpler, I think.
Makes sense.
I have one suggestion or concern, when the language says, "I'm pursuant to Chapter Six, Section Three Charter of the Town of North Reading," I think it should either be Section Three of the Charter of the Town of North Reading, or pursuant to the Charter, Charter of Town of North Reading, comma, Chapter Six, Section Three.
Yeah, I think of the, just.
I think it needs of the between the number three and charter. For the reference.
All right, I'll take a motion to accept with the amendment.
So moved?
Second.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, then, that's accepting for a first reading.
For a first reading.
First reading, yep.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a new club proposal. Mr. Bernard, would you like to lean away?
I would, Madam Chairman, thank you, so I think you might all be aware that we introduced the first robotics program last year, it was a program that was brought to the district administration by a group of parents and students that were very interested in, in working to, to bring about a successful robotics program in the district, and working with Director of Digital Learning, Dan Downs, the first robotics program seemed to be a suitable venue for introducing robotics to students, particularly at the high school level where students didn't necessarily have that when they left the middle school, where there was a budding program. We have courses at the high school now, Robotics Academy One, Robotics Academy Two, but not as an extracurricular activity, so we've seen, we've had a very successful year, the first robotics program, very largely due to the work of the parent support group that has been responsible for chaperoning, coordinating events, fundraising, excuse me, donations from local businesses, including Amazon Robotics, that's located in North Reading. And quite honestly, I see a place for the district to provide some support to them by allowing them to use the school facilities, I think it would be, I think it's appropriate that, right now, they're not able to do that because they don't have a school-based employee to work with them in the form of an advisor. And so what I'm asking the committee to do is to endorse, kind of consistent with our new pilot process that was adopted in the new collective bargaining agreement with the teachers' union, that we institute a pilot program with a faculty advisor in the first year at a $500 stipend. And what that stipend would allow, I think are a couple of, a couple of key things, one is that there is an employee of the district now that can have access to the building, to this, to this campus, to, to host competitions for practices and whatever other associated activities have been taking place in private businesses in the community. Work with the school administration to promote events, publicity of the events, student announcements, those kinds of things. And then thirdly, work to, to bring this program down into the lower grades, the elementary schools specifically, so we see, we see there's value in robotics, they were active at parent university, I don't think they're asking a lot of the district in terms of the sponsorship, and I'd like to, I'd like to have the district support them in there.
Does anyone have any questions, or?
How would that work, conceptually, pushing it into the lower grades, in terms of its function as a high school club and?
Yeah, I think we would, so we received a grant for the elementary schools, it's called, it's like the LEGO robotics program, and it's going to be introduced partly through the grade four with the digital learning specialists, so we think we're going to, we kind of have a little bit of a hook there with the digital learning specialists introducing that program in the elementary schools, but we're looking to kind of use that to build the capacity for interest when students come to the middle school for the actual first robotics program.
Wasn't there about 10 years ago, a LEGO robotics?
At the elementary schools?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't know, I don't know if it was.
I'm pretty sure, because my son was in it for a couple of years, it might have been like an after the school.
Yeah.
Thing, but yeah.
Like a club type of student activity?
Yeah. Well, I know, he definitely did it for two years, so I know it was.
Yeah, good, good.
He's graduated for two years past, so it's been a while.
It's been a while.
Is there somebody already identified that wants to be that teacher champion?
You know, I think, I think there were people that the administration sees as probably being likely interested, you know, teachers in that, in that field.
Yeah.
I don't know, you know, until it's official, no one's really expressed definitive interest, but I think we have people that have been kind of doing some volunteer work with the group, and I wouldn't be surprised if they, if they stepped forward to have a little bit more of a formal role, I expect that that will happen.
Yeah.
And just, just to clarify, this is the group that's been meeting outside?
Correct.
At the realtor?
They've been meeting at realty, realty offices, right, it's just hard to let, I mean, there's no, there's no ability for them to have access to this building off hours, you know, there's no supervision of a school, of an employee of the district, you know, you can understand all of the kind of tentacles that presents with liability and such, so we're looking to avoid that, but at the same time, if they're going to have, if they're going to host a competition or participate in a competition in a school, we think that, you know, having a school venue to do that makes sense.
So prior to this, they're, they've been participating without paying a fee?
Correct.
So they would be, if they hadn't done anything else, they'd be subject to an?
That's correct.
Activity fee.
Which allows them to do any other?
Exactly.
Sure.
Thing as well, so.
Yep, yep, just making sure I'm clear.
There's no further questions or discussions, I'll entertain a motion to accept the first robotics club. Ain't it right?
I will move to, I'd like to move to accept the first robotics club.
My second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good.
Thank you.
Nice to see.
Yes, that's good.
They've done, they've done a really nice job.
Okay. Mr. Conley.
Yes, thank you. So in your packet this evening was a draft of the fiscal year 2020 budget development calendar, I know it seems kind of hard to believe that we'd already be talking about fiscal year 2020, but we typically try to, you know, lay out the calendar in the kind of late August, September timeframe, and I will say that the calendar is very similar to what it has been in the past, I think this, this schedule and calendar does seem to work in terms of the timeline with the town and the finance planning team, the finance committee in submitting our budget on to the board of selectmen in time for kind of the town meeting warrant. So essentially, the month of September, the two meetings in September would certainly focus around the large capital improvement plan, and we're working on putting, making updates to that plan now for a presentation on September 10th. We would look for the committee to vote on September 24th, because our large capital projects are due to the capital improvement planning committee by the end of September, beginning of October, so that will allow us to vet those projects and meet that timeline. You actually may hear a draft of the budget goals as early as this evening, the next agenda topic, but by the end of the month, we'd want to draft our budget goals. We start the process internally on October 18th with the principals and the directors in terms of the budget request sheets that I administer and work with the budget leaders for in the district. We'd also present the five and 10-year enrollment projections, which I think is really kind of the start of the budget system, you know, process in a way, because it makes, it ties so much into our budget discussions later on, but so that would be in, on October 29th, we have to kind of wait for October 1 enrollments to come in and kind of, and run that through the, the projections and see, and see what changes. The request would be due back to my office right before the Thanksgiving holiday break, and then we would go through a lot of internal conversations in the months of January, December, and January, and early February with the administrative team. We would anticipate, although not listed here, that's when there would be several meetings with the budget subcommittee as well, we always like to have a draft of the budget just after the holiday season, a solid working draft around just after the Christmas break, the winter break, and we would certainly kick, have several meetings with the budget subcommittee probably between January and February 15th, when we would plan to release the budget books to the full school committee. That would give the school committee plenty of time to review, March 4th would be the preliminary budget presentation, March 28th, we would, we would offer the, the school budget webinar, maybe, maybe we'll try to do maybe even maybe more than one this year, but at least, at least one offering of a webinar.
Can we ask, how did the webinar go?
I thought it went fairly well for the first, the first one, we tried to publicize it as much as we could, we, we did kind of a lunchtime webinar, there was about 22 participants, and it was a pretty active discussion, about a 30-minute presentation followed by some Q and A afterwards, but I thought, I thought it went pretty well.
I thought it was.
For the first time.
It was well done, I mean, being on the other side at that point, and the fact that it was over lunch, like, just working, it was very easy to kind of get on and interview, so I think it gives, it gets access to people that might not be able to come to a meeting or something like that.
Yeah, I thought it would, well, we, we.
We enjoyed it.
Yeah, people were able to pre-register into the webinar, and that gave them access to documents in advance, the presentation, and I was able to share out with those I had registered, so I thought it went pretty well. April 3rd would be our first budget workshop prior to the public hearing, to discuss the budget, and then on April 8th, that Monday evening in this room, we would have the public hearing on the budget, that would be at 6:30, and then April 24th, it's probably would most likely be necessary, would be a second budget workshop, before the school committee would set to vote the budget on April 29th. Yep, and I should actually say fiscal '20, that budget workshop would be held, so correct that, and then the school committee would vote the budget on the Monday, April 29th meeting, and I would work out the date with the finance committee, I've tentatively selected May 1st, which is that Wednesday evening, that, at that point, where our budget is kind of voted, then we can kind of present that to the finance committee, so it would, I think May 1st would work out well, and then I believe May 6th, the select, the selectmen, or I think we'll, to be determined at that, what we'll continue to call, the board would vote the town meeting warrant, and then town meeting would vote the budget on June 3rd.
And just to be clear, the, the town meeting date's not set yet, correct?
Right.
Yeah, these, it's, these are anticipated dates, I guess that would be the third, the first Monday in June is what it has been.
It might, it might be smart to just include June 2019 TBA.
Yeah.
They may be moving that based on the last town.
Yeah, I think.
Okay. They have, they have now the ability to do so.
To move it, and if that happens, then the question is, does any of this other, do any of these other dates get moved? Or not, if we have more time, or are we?
Not if, I wouldn't think of it moving forward.
Yeah, I don't think we would, we would need, need to move them, I guess if we were to come to April 29th and maybe felt like we needed another week, we would probably, and, and at that point, we knew town meeting was going to be June 10th, we probably would have another week and we could amend, amend the calendar at that time, but I think we could, we could meet this, these deadlines, should, you know, and see what happens. So, I mean, it, it has been a motion to adopt or accept the, the calendar in the past, I don't know if we want to do that this evening, or, I believe.
I think probably, given the public hearing vote especially, it's probably smart to do that.
Yeah, I think we have done that.
All right. If that is what is needed, I'll entertain a motion to accept the 2020 budget development schedule.
I move to accept the 2020 budget development schedule.
I would, I would just might revise the June date to be determined for town meeting.
Yes.
With a TBD revision.
TBD.
Second.
All right, second as amended, correct?
Yes, as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. So yeah, the next item is.
I was just going to say, if you want to just continue.
I will do so, then, thank you, Madam Chairman. So we, we have drafted the fiscal year 2020 budget goals, we, maybe, maybe a meeting earlier than in the past, but we, both Mr. Bernard and I felt like we had some guidance based on the school committee goals workshop that took place at the beginning of August to take a pass at, I'm sorry, the end of July, to take a pass at, at the goals. And essentially, we are certainly using the school committee budget goal document that, I mean, school committee goals that you just adopted and discussed a short time ago, as well as, you know, NRPS 2021, the strategic plan, to, to guide and kind of frame these specific budget goals. For, I have highlighted any changes from the prior year budget goals, I've sort of put in red font on the handout to make it easier, and what, essentially what we were trying to do was capture the, the spirit of the conversation that took place in July at the, at the school committee goals workshop. I've also included the fiscal year 2019 budget goals in, in the packet as well as a point of reference, but I think it's fair to say is, you know, most of the goals are certainly similar, we would, you continue to support year four now of NRPS 2021, that would be budget objective number one with the full sub, sub bullet points in terms of things we would focus on achieving, but certainly NRPS 2021 would be a driver and a goal to accomplish as much of items laid out in that strategic plan as possible. The item highlighted there in red font specifically discusses some of the staffing and the initiatives around expanding foreign language, curriculum at the middle school and the high school, the STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, mathematics course offerings, so we, we try to get specific, the social emotional learning needs of students, all things laid out in NRPS 2021. So that was a major change there. The item number two, the maintained commitment of upkeep of school facilities, we specifically have added a goal to attempt to hire key operational positions, including a facilities engineer, a maintenance mechanic, and groundskeeper, so we certainly talked about with the goals workshop, the need for these positions, they've been part of the budget the last couple cycles, and unfortunately have not been able to be funded, so we wanted to highlight those specifically in this area. Certainly the need to continue to validate the food service program with a goal of continuing now on to operate a self-sufficient break-even program, since that was achieved this past fiscal year. And then I certainly added, begin to develop a long-range capital investment plan for the replacement of major food service capital equipment, I think that's, I think that's necessary.
Yeah.
We talked about that, and maybe with the ability of a, of a program that's being self-supportive and profitable, we can begin to put that together and try to lay that out of what that would look like. Continue to expand the community awareness of the budget process through the use of multimedia, we just talked about the webinar and different things that we've been doing, the short budget videos and the website and everything we're trying to do, the transcript articles, my, my Twitter feed, you know, everything we're trying to do to gain awareness about the budget that, that would be, continue. As you know, we're already up, have a five-year capital improvement plan, you'll hear updates to that plan next meeting. We've, we have done a pretty good job, I think, of monitoring unfunded mandates, but we'll continue to do that. The restoration of school and department operating budgets, continue to commit to that, try, attempting to manage unforeseen costs, that's been an ongoing goal. We talked about in the goals workshops, goal number nine, explore options for reducing, reductions of fees and tuitions assessed, so mainly through the athletics, kindergarten, transportation, fine arts. That's been a goal in the past, obviously we know the challenges in that, but we certainly would look at that. And then goal number 10 would be the, we will be negotiating a new contract with the food service and transportation providers, so we talked, the chat roles contract is coming to an end, NRT's contract could be coming to an end this year, so we would try to explore creative ways to procure these services that have potential to yield operational savings, we've talked about a regionalized contract with other school districts, so that would be explored. Goal number 11 on page two, review and report annually on the newly instituted performing arts fee and recommend changes as needed, so we talked about the need to monitor that fee and, and see where we're at this spring. Number 12 has been an ongoing goal about just collaborating with the finance planning team and the chairs and vice chairs, and we'll certainly continue to do that. And then goal number 13 would just be, we received two additional grants this year through lobbying efforts with Brad Jones, and we would continue to try to work with our state and local officials to achieve funding to uphold the mission and vision of the school district, so those were two, two awards that will certainly greatly benefit, you know, the district in terms of technology and, and school, school security measures. And then the fourteenth goal, we would approve a fiscal year two thousand twenty budget that adequately meets district requirements for optimum student achievement. So that kind of obviously sums everything up. What would be our ultimate, ultimate objective.
All right.
So, I guess entertain any questions?
I think Cliff would be very proud of leaving in number nine.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, on that one, I just, I'm thinking, I just mentioned to Michael, I think the closed parentheses is misplaced. Just typographical. I think it should be after the word programs. I think it reads better. So we'll make that change.
Okay.
But you're right.
Yeah.
I think Mr. Bowles would be pleased to see you continue to be a hawk on that.
Yes.
With, with the two contracts, a food service and the transportation, do they both end this year or can they be extended? Is there an option to extend them?
So food service is no option. We are ending year five, so we have to go and procure those services again. The transportation, the way we bid the transportation contract two years ago, three years ago now, was that we gave ourselves an option to accept two alternative years in that contract. So we could, we could extend in, for a fourth and fifth year.
At an increased cost.
At an increased cost. We could go out and see where we're at and then opt to do nothing and extend the current contract. We do, we could kind of explore both options. But we do have an option to go to a, a fourth and fifth year with the current contract.
Is there a time by which we have to, we have to request those, we have to?
We'd have to notify them by April first.
Okay. So we, we really have to make sure before that date that we know what we're going to do.
Correct, yeah.
I mean, anything that, if we can negotiate something better than that, great, but if not, we don't want to not invoke that option by April.
So we would, the idea was that the bids would go out and come back in well before that day, probably February timeframe, the bids would be coming in. So we have plenty of time during the budget development to assess that decision.
It occurs to me that another use of that option, if we do, or if we are able to explore possibility of a shared transportation system with another district, for instance, which is, I think, one of the goals here, or at least implied, then that option might allow us to align our contract with.
That's correct.
An identified district or districts.
Correct, yeah. That's right. So I'll be having a meeting in early October with other area districts to see if there's still interest in doing so. Some had expressed interest, some had expressed that they think they're okay. But I'll be reaching out and to talk about that.
Great.
So in terms of the, of the role of this committee in negotiating it, you would be the one that would be negotiating this, the contract? And we would have to approve or not?
So what would happen is the bids would go out, they would come back in, we would sort of have a committee to sort of evaluate them. And then I would certainly come back to this committee in public session and kind of present those options. And then it would certainly be also vetted and discussed through the budget process as well, given the budgetary impact that they would have. So the budget subcommittee would certainly be involved, you know, before the public presentation.
Any further questions or discussions that you'd like? All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the fiscal two thousand twenty budget goals.
I will move to accept the fiscal two thousand twenty budget goals presented. No changes, I think, right?
Um, just the minor.
Oh, the, the parentheses, yep.
Yeah.
In.
And as we still don't know, is the board a select, or select board? So I would just leave.
Yep, that's fine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you again, Michael.
Yep.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to accept the June twenty-fifth open session minutes.
I move to accept the June twenty-fifth open session minutes.
Second.
Okay. I was not here, so I am going to abstain. But all in favor?
Aye.
Three, one, zero, or three, zero, one?
Three.
One, okay. I will accept a motion to accept the open session goal workshop on July nineteenth.
I move to accept the open session July nineteenth goals workshop.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was that the first time we ever got it done on one day or one meeting?
First time since I've been superintendent, yeah.
Correct. All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the open session meeting of July nineteenth.
I move to accept the open session meeting on July nineteenth.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries for the zero. Thank you. And let's see, what's next? The budget update.
So I believe there was no operating budget update, but we did have a couple, one, a couple items that I wanted to speak to in this, in this area, particularly around the fourth quarter report for student activities. So adhering to the, the school committee policy and guidelines, we've been presenting quarterly updates and reconciled certified bank balances of each of the school student activity accounts. So this represents the quarter four ending balances, which is the balances through the end of fiscal year two thousand eighteen, which reflects activity through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. So we generally need a little bit of time to, to reconcile and close out and certify our, our year-end balances with the, the bank's statements. So what is included in this packet and what's included throughout the prior fiscal year, each, at the end of each quarter was, again, our certified reconciled quarterly account balances, as well as the listing of the active sub-accounts in their year-end balance at the middle school and the high school and those other two accounts that had those sub-account, accounts associated with it. So on page one here, you can see the reconciled certified balances of six-thirty, two thousand eighteen for each of the five schools. On the back of page one or page two would be the, the, the sub-accounts listed for the, for the middle school and then the sub-accounts listed for, for the high school. So. I think overall, I think I was certainly pleased with how things went throughout the fiscal year and certainly a lot of work went in to this by the, the school treasurers and the school principals and certainly my office and Sabita, Ms. Sabita Pye, who, who handles the student activity accounts as the chief accountant in my office that works with the, the school treasurers and the principals' offices. And we certainly a lot, you know, worked very hard this year to adhere to the new school committee policies and, and guidelines around student activities to be in full compliance with the, the most latest changes of student activity accounts and address some of the, the audit recommendations from, from a little over a year ago. So that being said, I don't know if there's any particular questions.
The class of two thousand eighteen, they still have quite a balance. Is that because their gift has not come through?
Yeah, so they, they typically have, our policy allows them, I think, ninety days at, through graduation. So they have until the end of September to make their gift or request their, their, their balance to be kind of refunded to them. So they have ninety days to kind of go and set up their reunion account, show us evidence of that, and then we would cut a check to that reunion account. Typically, what they've done is they've either notified us what their class gift has been, and the last couple of classes have done a sign.
They are too.
So if the.
So it's being dedicated to the sign. It, it, okay.
If that's the case. So once I get that information from the treasurer and the class president, what we'll do is we'll do a transfer of that amount of, of funds into the gift account for that designated purpose, if that's going to be the sign. Typically, what they do is they don't do the full amount. They might do, leave about twelve hundred dollars so they can have some startup cash for their reunion five years from now.
Oh, okay.
So maybe they'll tell us, they'll take three thousand dollars will be transferred and the balance will be made out to their reunion account. That's typically what, what happens.
Okay. And can you speak to the accounts that are, you know, above twenty-five hundred? Is it, is that typical?
Yeah, these are pretty.
Both in middle school and high school?
These are pretty typical. You know, most have, you know, somewhat, you know, under twenty-five hundred dollars. It's not unusual that, you know, the general school field trip account is a little bit over that, that amount of money. You know, the class of two thousand, you know, nineteen, two thousand twenty, they did some good fundraising last year. And it's not, it's not atypical that the class two thousand nineteen has a healthy balance. The biggest one here is the Maskers account.
Yes.
You know, clearly where you may recall, at the end of quarter three, I believe there were like eighty-five or ninety thousand. But they knew they had some, a lot of year-end expenses coming, coming up. They did a trip over in April vacation. So a lot of that, those items were paid the final quarter of the fiscal year. So it's not atypical or unusual that they're closing the year with this type of balance. They, it has been their practice because there's a lot of startup expenses in that next fall to get ready for the licensing rights and all the, the expenses for their, their show in the winter that they need this type of balance to get, to get things started. So that's, this has sort of been somewhat, you know, I would say the practice. Although they've done, they've had some very successful shows the last two years and they've done some really good fundraising. So it's, it's probably a little bit higher than when it's been. But it's typical, they would end the year with about forty-five to fifty thousand or so.
Then the other one that's rather large, student leadership and mentoring?
Yeah.
My, my feeling is on that, they haven't, they, so they do a late school year, their training.
Okay.
My feeling is they have not paid that, that bill for the, to the trainer yet.
Okay.
As they collect a fee.
It might have happened after June. This is again, this is as a, maybe that happened in July.
And is Slam the one that puts on the?
That's Slam, yep. Freshman orientation.
And the accident?
No, that's, that's on here as well. That's Students Against Drunk Driving.
Okay.
Student Leadership Academy does the, the freshman year mentoring and the freshman orientation program.
Okay.
And it could be the case with the yearbook as well. I don't.
There probably is, probably a bill that's not been paid.
It was not paid as of June thirty.
All right. Anyone else have any questions?
I, I just have, well, two questions. First, on the band one. So I know, I know when the performing arts fee was, discussion about that got around. There were some questions on what is, what they have to pay for, what they don't, about, you know, if, if they take it for a class, it just, there's no fee associated with that? Is this band, the stage band? Is this something the additional outside of it? Or does the actual band at the high school raise money as well?
For their competitions, like the MICA festivals?
Yeah, I think this is outside of that stage band of the class.
So it's the actual class, but if they do something extra outside?
Like the MICA festivals and such.
Yeah.
They fundraise in order to pay for the, for the cost of something, you know, something like that.
Okay. And then the only other question was the Maskers, how that, going forward, I know the next thing on here is the revolving account. So would, do we anticipate that this, the club account is going to stay around and they're still going to be raising in this?
So we, this will actually be a phasing out, there'll be a phasing out of the Maskers student activity sub-accounts. Great question. So the, the revenue and the receipts and going forward will be, will be, the idea is that they would be deposited in the new account, performing arts account, that we hope is established this evening. And, but the expend, we'll be expending the, this balance down throughout this year and until there's certainly nothing remaining. And then everything would kind of then be happening in the new, the new account that would be established.
And their fundraising would go into the new account as well?
Yeah, we, we've talked about that. We feel like it's a little, it's, it's sort of easier to keep everything in one account so that, that new account would be user fees, ticket sales, and any little bit of fundraising that that, that group may do. It's, it's essentially the same, the same group as opposed to trying to have the two sets of books in a little bit and small amount of money over, over here. That's what we've talked about. We think that's maybe a little, certainly cleaner. So the idea is that, you know, we have no fully authority to transfer the balance to one account. So this money would have to be expended down and then the ticket sales and the user fees would go into the revolving.
So this was a performing arts user fee, right?
Correct.
And so Notorious?
Mr. Everett?
Is, was that included in that?
It was.
So would that?
In the new fee.
In the new fee? So. So if they're doing any fundraising, that would also flow into that?
No, I, I mean, I think the Notorious may still exist. I, I think, I think the idea is that there's so many students involved in the Maskers and they're, they're essentially doing, essentially the same, the same amount of students that are all going to pay that, that fee.
I guess I'm just asking, is there a danger of some monies getting mingled, co-mingled and not knowing what?
I, I think we'll, we'll work pretty closely. We've already had meetings with Ms. Kane.
Yeah, we have one last week.
To make sure that does not happen.
We're committed to make sure that if Notorious is out raising money for an event, that money gets dedicated to Notorious. Is that, is that your question?
Yeah, basically, yeah. You're going to account for all that stuff.
Yeah, we all certainly.
We all know Mrs. Kane. She's going to make sure that that.
So any group that clean, any group here that falls under the performing arts would, these balances would go away and you'll account for them separately.
Within the revolving.
Within the revolving.
Within the revolving.
Correct.
You will count for them within, you know, individually within the revolving.
That's correct.
So Notorious will also spend down the two thousand eight eighty-seven in there right now? And that account's going to go away as well?
Yeah, before they resolve.
If that's the idea, I mean, I have, I'll have to get a little more information from Ms. Kane as to those students that are involved. And if, if that is functioning the same way she's told me Maskers is functioning in terms of any additional fundraising. But the idea is that if it's essentially the same number of students and it's going to stay and to support the same level of expenses that the user fee and the ticket sales are designed to support, then that would go away.
So I'm assuming it runs the same way as the athletic?
Correct.
Fees though?
That's, that's the goal here, with the revolving account, right?
So under the athletics, you have football, soccer, volleyball.
In terms of all the.
That's correct.
Good, good analogy.
Separate income, yeah, okay. That's correct, whatever the source.
Yep.
All right, makes sense. Any other questions or discussion? Thank you, Michael.
You.
Mr. Bernard, or do you want to do the?
I think the revolving account vote.
The revolving account first?
Yeah, if you could, please.
Mr. Conley again?
Yes. So it was recommended by our auditor that it would be good practice now that the adoption of the new performing arts user fee has been established at the, the June meeting that would require the establishment of performing arts revolving accounts to account for the revenue and the expenses as we just talked about under chapter seventy-one, section forty-seven, that it would be a good idea for the committee to make, take a formal vote just establishing and authorizing these revolving accounts. So there's a recommended motion included in a memo that was included in your packet. And I, you know, I think this is just good practice that's been recommended by our auditor at this point in time.
I will entertain him.
I actually have a question, excuse me.
Certainly.
Will, would there, would there be separate revolving accounts for each elementary school?
There will, yeah. So the idea is that there'll be a separate revolving account for essentially each school, but the elementary, middle school, and high school, there'll be three separate funds that would be established for each, at each level. And then within the elementary, because there's three schools, we would sort of use the same fund, but use project accounting in my world to separate between the three schools. So we can clearly decipher and track receipts and expenses for each production and each, each user, each set of school.
I, I, I'll be honest, I think Mr. McGowan made a good point on the last one where I'm a little bit concerned about authorizing this. But it seems like, I guess I'm still a little bit confused if, well, I just want to make sure that everyone's in agreement that, you know, Notorious will be using this now and all the other groups will be using this now as well. I understand in practice how it will operate, but I just want to make sure that every, every group is, I don't know what I'm asking for, but I, I'm, I'm concerned that there will be ambiguity from this. And I guess I'd love to see some, I don't know if there's like an authorizing document that talks about how there'll be sub-accounts set up or whatever it is that will explain, if you put this in, you get that amount out. Is there, is there a document that talks about that? Or is it just one account and there's no actual rules or regulations set up for it?
No, there would be rules and regulations. I mean, we, we have to create the accounts because the user fee exists. We cannot, we cannot deposit a school committee voted user fee into a student activity account. Is that, it's a difference of what is governed under the school committee and what is governed under the students. So the accounts do need to exist. We need a mechanism to deposit the, the fee.
And does the athletic revolving account already have documentation like that as well? Or documents that were created about the use of those?
It's more what governs a revolving account.
It more governs a revolving account. It more governs a revolving account. So we, we're not, I mean, under state law, we're not able to
Right.
take funds from a revolving account based on the user fee that was established under vote of the school committee for a specific purpose and use it other than expenses that are directly associated with that purpose.
Maybe they're two separate things because this is specifically being opened. I mean, I know you referenced before when we were talking about these other accounts, but this is specific for the user fees. It has to be opened.
Correct.
For the fact that we approved user fees. So that's one separate thing. I think where the ambiguity lies is when you start to talk about some of these open balances for fundraising or ticket sales, things like that. And, and why, and understanding how that's going to be managed within this account. Because the user fee is one piece, right? We have to open it.
Correct.
But I think the ambiguity lies more so in the rollover of some of these performing arts balances.
Isn't it, isn't it kind of the same how it works now?
With athletics.
Right.
Yes.
Well, besides that, who, who's the one that governs whether it goes to the Mascar's or the Notorious?
That advisor.
The, that club advisor.
That club advisor who is still the same person.
If I'm hearing the question correctly, and I don't know if I am.
Maybe I'm misunderstood.
What, what I'm hearing is that people want, the committee wants to be sure that if Notorious has a present balance and we want to make sure that that balance, they have a right to that amount of money. It's just going to be through a different fund. Be within a revolving account. But before they can access that, they'd have to spend down the money in the existing account.
No, no, I understand that, but I think to his question, he's saying, how is that going to be tracked if it's underneath this new format? It's going to be tracked the same way.
Yeah.
Allison says Notorious raised five hundred, so it goes to the Notorious underneath this new format.
Correct.
Versus under the old.
As a, under Mascar's or whatever.
I think, I think I have a couple of different concerns. Number, number one concern is if money's coming in for the user fee, how is that being divided up amongst the different organizations? Secondly, if money's coming in and they first have to use the money in their operating account right now, Mascar's has almost seventy thousand dollars. So they're not going to get a penny of the user fees until they've already spent seventy thousand dollars. And is that fair? And I just, I just, I'm a little concerned about how it's going to operate and.
I think the way to look at it is the knowledge, is we don't, is there all going to support the performing arts and the fine arts program? That was, and we laid out five, you know, essentially five major activities within that fine arts, performing arts program. And there's, um, there's Notorious, you know, the acapella group, there's the theatrical and musical production. String ensemble, jam band, the bands. And just like any user fee or gate receipt that may come in, um, or other, you know, gifts or fundraiser that may come in to support athletics, the money stays with the athletic program. And this money will stay with the performing arts, fine arts program through theatrical and musical for those, for those activities. And it will, all the expenses will be used to support. We don't take five hundred dollars that came in, or five thousand dollars coming for soccer, say that five thousand dollars is only going to be spent for soccer. We, we, you don't do that for athletics.
No, you couldn't.
Yeah, so it's.
But the question is, do all the, are all the organizations aware of that as well? And if, if one raises, you know, seventy thousand dollars in a year and another?
The fundraising dollars will stay with, the fundraising dollars will stay with.
If you're talking about the money generated from the user fee?
Correct.
Is not owed to anyone?
That's correct.
Based on how?
The fundraising dollars, just like the soccer team fundraiser, that money will stay with the team.
And really, the user fee is going to generate, is going to, it, it may just barely cover the stipends.
Correct.
That's right.
Right. So it's not like the user fee is going to, to, uh, produce, unless we have a huge increase, I suppose, in participation.
That's correct.
A slush fund that goes beyond just paying for the stipends.
So just like.
Sales too, does that?
So the ticket sales.
Would go into individual accounts.
That will stay, the ticket sales will, will stay, will be deposited in the revolving account, just like the gate receipts are as well.
And that will be dispersed across all or stay within the specific?
I think it's probably going to have, it's going to just be knowing the expenses of a musical or theatrical production is going to have to stay within.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that, it will.
Yeah.
Um, but just like the fundraising that these individual teams do, we use the project accounting to keep those fundraising dollars, um, through the athletic revolving account for, for soccer and for basketball and for hockey. We'll, we would either do the same, the plan is to be to do the same in this area for those, you know, subset of fine arts programs and students involved in fundraising. Um, but like I said, it's, it's a little bit of a work in progress because it's, it's so new. And I think the commitment is that we'll work with, you know, Mrs. Kane and the, and the club treasures involved. And, you know, it, it may make sense to keep, based on the description, I've only got the Mascar's description right now, what those students are doing. Um, to keep it on the student activity side, if it's that, if it's the, that club functions that much, you know, subsetly different than what the acapella or what the user fee is doing. So I think it's a matter of us, we, we always need to get a description, um, and an account of each, uh, of each one of those subaccounts. And that's what we would do before we start switching any money, you know, over. But this, the establishment of this revolving account would be, allow us to put the ticket sales and the user fees into that account to support the finance programs that we just laid out in the, in the establishment of that fee.
I mean, I, I'll, I'll be honest, I'm still concerned. Um, I, and I was on the policy subcommittee last year when we went through exactly how money is, is taken in and how everybody handles. And it was very specific about how the money is handled and I like the policies for there. Perhaps all we're doing today is just creating the account. We're not talking about money going into it yet, and so that's a different thing, as Miss Spoutwell points out. But I'm very nervous that if we go from a system that everybody knows how it operates, how it works, what's, what's to be paid out of that, what can be paid out of it, what's paid by the school district to, it's a work in progress. We don't exactly know yet how it's going to be used, if there is extra money left over, what's it used for, why does one club get it versus another club? Um, and I, I'll be honest, I'm not aware of exactly how it works with the athletics. And so, I mean, personally, I just like to, I don't necessarily have an issue with having the account there, but before it's used, I would like to have a little bit more of an understanding of how this, how it works and what the, I assume there has to be some guidelines that everybody adopts, yeah.
I think what we're looking for tonight is to establish the account. And maybe between now and the next meeting, we'll put together a little kind of a white paper on what is, how does, how does a revolving account function? How does a, an extracurricular student activity account function? And how are the, what are the parameters going to be for each of the clubs within that, within that larger account?
Yeah, I was going to say, it's, it's more, it's more about the plan.
Correct.
Right? It's, it's the plan that you're talking about figuring out. It's what's that final?
Why don't we put that together for you for September tenth? I think we can do that.
So it's the approval of the opening, the account, but how the plan for everything outside of the user fees, could we?
Correct, yeah.
Could we?
And it's important to say that the account is going to be open because the fees are going to be collected.
Well, it has to be.
So, by, by, by practice, we need to approve it, but in reality, the account is going to be open because we're going to be collecting the user fees.
Yeah, correct.
So.
I think just transparency will help resolve.
Yeah, we can, we can put something together for you.
How do you feel?
Again, if we're collecting the fee and we're just opening the count, I'm okay with that. I'm worried about, I, I'm just trying to anticipate what could happen months down the road. And if there are bills that start coming in, I could see, again, if we're saying to Mascar's, you can't get anything until you've spent seventy thousand dollars. And then other clubs that haven't done anything may say, well, we want to go to this competition now and we can use the money for that. I just, I just want to, again, I'm not saying it's going to happen, but that's my worry.
I, I mean, would it be useful to say that we will, to keep these, keep the, um, the other, these accounts open? Until there's a, would it be useful to you, so we keep, we'll keep the club accounts open until there's an understanding amongst, at, at, for the committee as to how those funds are going to be integrated into the, ultimately integrated into the?
Yeah, those, I think, I guess the, those accounts would not be instantly closed or the plan would not to be close those.
And also I would say that if perchance, any of the clubs raise money in the, in the first month of the school year, that the money flows into those accounts as well.
I mean, what really needs to happen is we sort of, you need to sort of understand a little bit more on these subaccounts in terms of what those students are doing and what the source in terms of the fundraising are. The Mascar's was clearly described to me and the, the majority of the activity within that Mascar's subaccount was functioning through ticket sales and so forth. And it was, it was really something that in my mind belonged in a revolving account, um, because of that, how that's functioned.
But still set aside for the Mascar's, for that.
Correct.
That's right.
Correct.
I mean, I think, I think I'm comfortable with the user fee being collected and it being expended on advisors and other school expenses. But beyond that, my worry is about how the expenditures are going to happen of, of money that goes in there. And if it's privately fundraised by a group, whether they keep the, it can only be for them. If there are extra amounts left over from the, from the user fee, like again, does the user fee go to pay the whole advisor or does some of the private?
We'll put together something for September tenth. I mean, I think we, I think we can put something together that will absolve you of any worry or concern.
That's my concern and so.
I think we can, I think we can, I'm confident we can do that.
The plan we presented on June twenty-sixth laid out exactly what those, that revenue that first year would be spent on. And it was essentially to offset the stipends.
Right.
And that's what it is.
There isn't going to be a significant amount of.
There's not, yeah, correct.
Revenue from the fees available beyond the stipends.
Right.
But that was an estimate and so theoretically there could be a surplus.
It was a very conservative estimate too. Very conservative.
I, I, again, I, I just, I take it to heart when we're talking about doing it a new way and holding money. And I just want to make sure that we've thought it out and I just haven't seen.
Well, to that point, remember, it is a pilot.
It is.
And when we, when we spoke about this previously, we said we would be coming back in May and, and, you know, identifying for you any areas where we thought we had come up short and anywhere we didn't. And I think that's still, you know, it's, it's ve, I think it's, it needs to be said that it's very much a work in progress. This is, this is very new. But I think, you know, Mike, Michael's, Michael's competence in this area is something I think we can all be assured with, so.
I, I think that's right. I think, I think we're already tracking, I mean, obviously as just as part of regular accounting, you're, you're attracting on pa, you're, uh, tracking on paper a lot of theoretical accounts.
Right.
Uh, I, I, I think, to me, the, the bigger, not the bigger concern, but just make sure the clubs are all, the activities and, and they're all on board.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say that, that would certainly be what happens. And most, I would say, I think, I think the club advisors, I think they're.
We're talking about, we're talking about two or three people.
Yes.
There's a lot of them are shared people, so that's right.
That we've already met with.
Maybe from our viewpoint, we're kind of saying, well, we know who's going to be working with these two or three accounts, but.
But, um.
To put it down on paper may be helpful.
Be helpful to me too.
And, 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 please, none of this is that I don't trust in Mr. Connelly or any of that. It's just, you know, just trying, I think our job is to anticipate what problem could occur.
There's likely to be questions. There are. It's new to us too.
There's been a lot of conversations and dialogue and discussion and a lot of behind the scenes, you know, dialogue with, with auditors and folks that have, you know, we're dealing with pretty significant change. And I think we need to kind of see how things play out and, and, but I can assure you that, you know, nothing will change and no money will be taken or until, you know, and the idea is that they'll stay within the account. And we legally need to make sure that the students involved that are fundraising or earning that money, that that stays for that purpose. And that's what, we'll design a mechanism whether, you know, to make sure that happens like we've always, like we've always done.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I will still entertain the motion as.
Um, I will move, uh, the, the recommended motion, I move that the North Reading School Committee vote to authorize the creation of the performing arts revolving accounts at each level, elementary, middle school and high school. In accordance with chapter seventy-one, section forty-seven of the general laws.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Bernard, would you like to go over the new staffing?
I would. The list continues to grow. So I actually have two additional hires that aren't on your list that we have hired since the list was printed for you. But, um, I will start with the Batch Elder School. Um, Jessica Skioli has been hired as a new special education teacher. Um, also at the, um, Batch Elder School, but not on your list, Teresa Guadz has been hired as a special education paraprofessional. And Jennifer Peterson as a grade one teacher, um, that's a long-term substitute position for the year.
Is that for Mrs. Berry?
It is.
The last one, you said Teresa Guad?
Guadz. G O, G W O Z D Z. G W O Z D Z.
And the other one was Peterson?
G W O Z D Z. And it's Teresa with an H, T H E R E S A. And the other one is Jennifer Peterson, P E D E R S E N. It's a long-term sub for the year and a grade one at the Batch Elder.
Can I ask you one more question?
Sure.
After that. Is the, um, it just, a lot of parents, because I have a first grader, have reached out, just, I was just curious if that's been announced to them, um, yet?
My belief is Mr. Colleen sent an email out, yeah, Blackboard Connect, yeah.
Just if they asked me, I wanted to.
I don't know if he's announced who the new hire is.
Okay.
Only that that, that Mrs. Berry was not going to be in for the year.
Got it.
The hire came in since Friday. I think it came in on Friday, actually. So I don't know if the announcement of the new person.
Okay.
But I guess it has now, huh?
No, it's in an open meeting now.
It's not, it's, it's, exactly. It's, it's fine, yeah.
Fair game since it's been discussed here.
Uh, special education paraprofessional. And at the Hood School, um, always nice to see, uh, North Reading High School graduates on here, like, like Jess Skioli and, uh, that I mentioned just a moment ago, and Paul Burdette, who's going to be at the high school. Um, Tommy Hogan, Thomas Hogan has been hired as a special education paraprofessional at the Hood School. And Carrie Anne Moore, also a special education paraprofessional. Um, at the Little School, Nicole Salzman and Ruth Elikis, both hired as special education paraprofessionals. At the Middle School, um, in the physical education department, Tristan Irish, Mr. Tristan Irish. Um, and also physical education, a long-term subposition for the fall is Anthony Ricardo. Um, the next three are special education paraprofessionals, James Burke, Sarah Morris and Mary Ellen Groot. Linda Zulo, some of you may know, Linda Zulo has come out of retirement to come back as a general paraprofessional at the Middle School. And not on your list is another special education paraprofessional hired since Friday at the Middle School, Ashley Egan. And at the high school, we have a long-term substitute in the English department, Amanda Godner, a science teacher, Thomas Ledoux. Um, we had a, one of our, um, high school teachers, uh, Mr. Rick Doucette was, has been hired as an assistant principal at Saugus High School. So that left a vacancy, um, in the technology and engineering department at the high school. And we have hired Justin Reddington. And Caitlin Troppiano has been hired at the high school as a special education paraprofessional. So I think if my count is right, we are up to thirty-seven new hires, um, so far this year with a, with a handful to go. So I'm confident we will be fully staffed for opening day, um, with maybe one exception that I'll talk about a little bit later. Ashley Egan, E G A N. E G A N, special education paraprofessional.
I presume the one you will speak about is high school?
You, you can presume that.
High school vice principal?
Assistant principal, yes.
Assistant principal?
I will be.
Okay, then I won't ask that question now.
All right. Well, before we get there, we'll go through our bids and donations.
So I believe this evening there was no bids and donations to accept, but there was a report that I wanted to inform the committee. I think I discussed it at the last meeting that, um, I would plan to present the, the final breakdown of the various gifts, both in-kind and monetary donations that we received throughout fiscal year two thousand eighteen. And I'm very happy to report that the school department has received gifts totaling a value of one hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. So a significant, uh, level of generous donations that have helped support expenses such as athletic team expenses, fitness equipment, improvements to Kerry Park and batting cages expansions. Uh, field trip expenses, transportation expenses, technology, equipment, drama and musical production expenses, um, cost that support enrichment activities, uh, across the district. So the, the list certainly goes, goes on and on, but I think everyone is well aware that we certainly couldn't, you know, make, the North Reading student experience is what it is today without the generous support of the various donors that are detailed on the attached spreadsheet. So certainly the five PTOs or parent associate. So certainly the five PTOs or parent associations do a tremendous job with their annual budgets, supporting enrichment activities and class field trips and teacher appreciations and, you know, teacher classroom supplies and then doing a lot of extra stuff as they have the funds to do so for technology equipment, robotics equipment and a variety of things that has been a challenge for the, for the school operating budget to, to support. So we, we certainly are astounded throughout the fiscal year about how many gifts and donations are listed each meeting and, you know, this list captures it and throughout this past fiscal year, but we certainly appreciate all the efforts by these, these various donors and support and booster organizations.
I noticed you highlighted all of the student activities. Can you explain what that means?
Uh, yeah, that's more for our little accounting, just so we, we send, we tend to track the student activity ones. So we know, it's more for my office's accounting to know that those, those funds get deposited directly in the student, the student activity account. They're, they're supporting that specific activity and not the gift account. So a lot of what we just talked about, so we can, you know, track that accounting and reconcile those balances. That's all it is, it's really, it's our own internal tracking.
That's right, wasn't meant for us.
Right, right.
Ignore the highlighting.
That's a lot of money.
It's a lot.
It sure is.
It's a long list.
Sure is.
All right.
So I do post this on the website as well.
Oh, eighty donations. Um, subcommittee updates. The finance planning team met on August 21st. Myself, Mr. Buckley, Mike and Mr. Conley and Mr. Bernard were all there. It was a little bit of a long meeting, but.
Yeah, I think a focus was on where, where things stood as far as the revenue plan. There was quite a bit of discussion around that. Um, and I just, you know, again, I think we're, at this time of year, my sense is, is that we're probably about where we usually stand fiscally and that is, you know, we, we see the challenges lying ahead. Um, and just, I think, you know, the spirit of that meeting was to kind of brace ourselves for probably, you know, another arduous year as we hammer out a budget for both the town and the school department.
And I think Mr. Prisco mentioned that the sanitation or the trash was going to be a little bit of a hiccup for us receipt wise.
Hmm.
Because it's costing almost more than what we're receiving in.
Yeah. Trash, trash removals, yeah.
Right. Yeah, there'll be a little different accounting around, around that. So it kind of remains to be seen how that will impact the revenue plan, but I think it's, they're committed to making sure it's, it's not harm that, you know, the school department.
I mean, I think it's going to be a challenging year in many ways. I think we've already seen a few expenses higher than we thought they would be. We've seen some revenue projections that aren't going to be what they were supposed to be. And I think we're committed to trying to understand the best way forward and it's, I mean, it's a work in progress and so we'll, we'll see. It'll be a challenging year.
Um, I think that was it for subcommittees that had met since last time.
Right.
So I will announce the upcoming meetings. The policy subcommittee will meet September 10th at 5:00 PM in the superintendent's office. The athletic subcommittee will meet September 18th at 12:30 PM in the superintendent's office. The finance planning team will meet again September 20th at 8:15 AM in the superintendent's office. The substance abuse coalition will meet September 25th at 10:00.
Oops.
10:00 AM.
Sorry.
I'll be, I'll be in bed by then.
I bow, you and me both.
At the police, North Reading Police Station and then the NORCAM Board of Directors meets on September the 27th at 7:00 PM in the NORCAM office. And with that, Mr. Bernard, do you have an administration?
I do. Madam Chairman, thank you. I think you should all have a, excuse me, you should have a packet. So just a few things to highlight for you. Tomorrow, we will begin our first of two days of orientation of our new teachers. And I believe there are 24 slated to come for a two-day orientation program with their mentor, assigned mentor teacher. And you're all welcome to come to the high school cafeteria for lunch, if you'd like, at noon time tomorrow.
What are they serving?
Excuse me? Filet mignon, shrimp cocktail.
Oh, I will be there.
So please stop by if your schedule allows. Certainly no pressure, but you're, you're all welcome to attend. Similarly, at 12:00 PM on September 4th, next Tuesday, is our opening day meeting with all of the faculty and staff of the district before we welcome students on Tuesday, September 5th. Ms. Embriano, could I ask if you would be willing to share a few opening remarks on, on the 4th in the PAC? Are you available?
I am.
Thank you. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. You've, you've done it before.
Yes.
But if you're, if you, if you're not able to come because of work schedules or such, if you, if you could just let me know that, but I'll certainly acknowledge your presence if you're there. Typically, the committee will sit down front. If you can, if you come into the PAC, kind of the seats to the, to the left, right, is where we usually sit, right in the front row.
How long does it run, just so I can?
So, yeah, it's, it's, that's a good question. So the schedule right now is about 12 to 1 with different presentations. Janine, the teachers' union president, Dr. Daley, myself. And then we have a keynote speaker at 1 o'clock. These are rough times till about 2:15. And then at 2:15 is the, is a, something we started last year that the, there are people that come in from the, from the town hall as well as the insurance, health insurance company and speak to the staff about ways in which we can kind of save money basically by utilizing some of the things that came about through the new health insurance adoption that came into play last year. So that will go from 2:15 to 2:45.
And last, last year, the whole committee was able to make it, but I think we left after the opening remarks.
Yeah.
That's, that's not unusual, I think, before the guest speaker.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we've do, we do things a little bit different. So the first, my first two years as superintendent, I had student performance. Last year and this year, I've got a keynote speaker. So next year, I might do something a little different, you know, to kind of just keep it, change it up. But there's about an hour's worth of.
So if I'm available 12 to 2?
If you're, if you're available even 12 to 1.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, really, last year, we also, it wasn't a keynote speaker right after the initial comments.
It was the health insurance.
It was the health insurance review, which we left for, so.
I've actually flipped those this year, yeah.
Okay.
Good point, right. Gentlemen's name is Dr. John Draper. His, the title of his presentation is Crucial Conversations About America's Schools. So interestingly enough, Dr. Draper spoke at the annual conference of Masbro, the Mass Association of School Business Officials. And someone that I know that happened to be at that conference came back very excited about his presentation. And interestingly enough, I know two other communities nearby, Stonem and Swanskit, that are both having him come. I don't know if I told you about Swanskit, but definitely Stonem. So he got some, you know, he was well received and so Michael came back and was, you know, thought he might be somebody that would be good for the staff. So I reached out to him and have spoken to him a couple of times and plan to speak with him again one more time this week before next week. But yeah, we're excited to, to have him. And I, I might actually have a neighboring superintendent, you don't even know that she spoke to me today in Linfield, that may come and hear him speak and is thinking about how possibly having him come next year, so. So, you know, we're, I'm going into it a little bit blindly. I'm taking, taking Mr. Connolly at his word, so. There's a lot of pressure on.
Fair to say, all the pressure by Mr. Connolly now, so.
I'm sure it's going to be good. He sounds great on the phone, so we'll see, so.
Very good.
Yes.
Are you doing the besters?
Tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Ann's a little nervous. We're going to have a cooler water on this. So tomorrow, the new teachers get treated to a bus tour of the community, literally in a school bus. Do it every year and everybody does it. When I got hired as high school principal, first year I had to do it. Every, everybody does it.
No, I was never invited on the tour.
I think Mel did once. I think he did it, yeah.
It's, so it's tomorrow at, I think, I think they come back, I think it's like 11 to 12:30. But yeah, we might be doing the quick tour if it's.
When Mel did it with, I think with a horse and buggy. With a horse and buggy.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah. This is a, this is a yellow, old yellow school bus that's taking them around. So it's kind of a tradition here.
Hey, the kids have to take it. It may well be on the 5th.
So Ann, my, my administrative assistant takes them around town and shows them, you know, where, when you hear about Martin's Pond or McIntyre or Ryers, you know, she takes them to all these kind of, I'll call them landmarks or whatever.
And they're not air-conditioned buses?
It is not an air-conditioned bus tomorrow, no. No, it is not.
I hear tomorrow's going to be cool, so.
Oh, good. Hope you're right. Only, only low 90s, right?
Low 100s, yeah.
The newsletter, my summer newsletter, I attached for you, this went out as an email distribution, but I know some of you are no longer on our email distribution lists, correct? You might have got, you may have.
Apparently not, I don't think, I don't think I got it.
Okay, so I think you're off now. I think we did the switch over, so I usually provide a paper copy to the committee anyway.
All right, I don't know if I got it. I probably did.
It was last Monday. Now, we could go.
Maybe I did, actually.
Been a crazy week.
And I definitely didn't get it.
So I, I wanted to update you, you, I, I think you're all aware that our assistant principal at the high school, Mr. Michael Downs, was named the principal at the Andrews Middle School in Medford last Sunday, a week ago today is when he spoke with me. He resigned from his position on, on that following Monday, effective last Friday, the 24th. And I worked with both him and the superintendent in Medford, who's, who's brand new. It had a lot of administrative hiring to do to, to release Mr. Downs. I believe they started school today, or at least he was needed there today. So, you know, I felt it was important that he, as a new principal, be, you know, present at his new school, so to speak. So we're working with, with Mr. LaPrat at the high school to, you know, to kind of fill in any gaps that there might be. And, you know, a number of people have stepped up, both on his teaching staff, the middle school administration, Dr. Daley, myself, and, you know, we're going to all pitch in to, to make sure that things open smoothly at the high school. I have no, no reason to think that they won't. And just to give you a little sense, the position was posted on, it's unusual that we have an administrative vacancy, so I, I, this is the first time I've had to inform the committee of that. So, you know, I just, I think it's important for you to know where we are. We posted the position last Tuesday, as of about 5 o'clock today. Believe it or not, we had 50 applicants.
Wow.
Five zero applicants for what we're, what we're advertising right now is an interim position for the school year, for all of this coming school year. And so we're going to go into it, seeing what we can get from that, thinking that this is probably not the best time of year to be advertising for a permanent successor, but that may change. It's just that's, that's where things are right now. So I would expect that there could be interviews, you know, as early as next week. The posting is active through this Friday, I believe it was a two-week posting period, so. So, you know, and, and just, I'm, I'm going to talk a little bit about this briefly on opening day on September 4th, but, you know, we, I think it says a little something about our, our district, that we've had three people this year move on to administrative positions that, two teachers, Beth Levitt at the, at the Little School, to the Alice Barrows Elementary School Principalship in Redding, Mr. Doucette that I just moment ago, mentioned a moment ago, who interestingly enough has the same office that I had when I was the assistant principal at Saugus High School. That was kind of, until they tear that school down, they're really a new school, but I thought that was kind of interesting. And now Mr. Downs moving on from an assistant principalship to a principalship of a middle school. So I think it, you know, while, while we certainly wish them all well, you know, they create voids in the system when they're no longer here and certainly three good people that I think will, you know, will certainly do well in their new jobs, so. So I wanted to give you also an update on the app. So the truth be told on the app, I made the decision that to do this correctly, I was going to hold off and the reason, a little bit, and the reason is the, to download the app through the Apple Store on an Apple device is more involved than it is on an Android device. So there was debate down in my office on whether or not we would roll it out and have it available for only Android devices and then have it available on Apple devices a little bit later, once we went through some, some hoops, so to speak, that Apple is asking us to do, to have it available on an Apple device. So that, plus, I think I've spoken before with all of you about kind of a joint venture with our police department and the community impact team to have an anonymous tip feature available in the community. It makes sense to me to have that as part of one of the buttons of the app. And so we're close to having that product available in the community. And I think it makes sense to, when, again, when we do this rollout, my hope was to have this available to the community as an app in August for the start of school. But I think those two issues made, you know, in my mind, made sense to, you know, let's, let's do this right. It's very new to us. So the people who are much smarter with this technology than I am are telling me that they think September is a reasonable goal, you know, the month of September. So it's about a month delayed from where I wanted it to be, but in any case, I think it was, it was not for a lack of, of certainly effort and a lot of people have helped me with this, as you know, Michael, Michael Tyrell, Dan Downs, Patrick Daley. But we think that this is the more prudent way to do it. So it's coming soon and I kind of previewed that a little bit in my, in my summer newsletter as well.
In, in terms of the anonymous tip, is that anonymous, anonymous tip that goes directly to the police station?
Yes.
It doesn't come through us? We don't?
Correct.
Hold any of that?
No. It's for, and it's for kind of like, you know, high-end, I would say, you know, criminal-like offenses, that kind of thing, but it would go to the police department, correct? And then the last thing I just wanted to share with you is, you know, about opening day, you know, this is your last school committee meeting before we open school next week. Mr. Connolly and I, along with Wayne Hardaker, our supervisor of buildings and grounds, toured our, toured our three elementary schools last Thursday, as we typically do in the, in the, in the August, month of August, to, you know, just kind of, you know, spend a dedicated amount of time talking to the custodial staff and, and checking in on where our progress lies with our schools being ready for opening day. And I think it's fair to say, I, I think this might have been one of my shorter lists of Wayne Hardaker, of things that I saw that needed to be done. It was, it was all on one page, I know that, for the three elementary schools. This campus is a little bit different because Michael and I are here, you know, every day, so we, we have a, you know, a real bird's eye view into what, what things might need to be done. But, you know, we have a very good staff that works very hard, under a lot of pressure to, to do a lot. And I, I can assure you all and the public that, that our schools will be in fine condition, ready for opening day. You know, folks at the Little School will be treated to a beautiful new gymnasium floor. You know, we, we've done a, yeah, some really, you know, it looks wonderful, it really does. And Michael has a, when Michael does his presentation for you on, on the capital plan, he has a photo of the floor and it really looks sharp. We were happy to see, there's a little bit of work to do with the, what they call is like kind of a coal molding, like a baseboard molding. That was being done, I think, Fri, this coming Friday. But the school really looks sharp in all of our schools, you know, we did, we continue with our painting, painting program this year with a, with a significant focus on the three elementary schools as well as some, some additional color in this building, this building, in the grade eight wing, um, a couple of office areas, um, the library media center classroom, um, so, you know, over the last three summers, we've tried to bring some more color into this building with, um, with paint, um, and I think it, you know, I'm, I think everyone will continue to feel very proud about the condition of our schools, people take, people that do the work take great pride in readying them for, um, for opening day. We have an annual meeting hosted, Wayne Hardika hosts his entire staff on a meeting, it happens to be tomorrow, where he invites Michael and I to speak to all of the custodians, buildings and grounds staff, um, and we will express, you know, our appreciation to them, but, um, things, things look good when we saw them last Thursday, um, this building will be receiving a pretty significant landscaping effort this week, um, this is, you know, as you all know, this is a big campus, and, uh, there's a lot of detail with the mulching and the edging and the weed whacking that we don't typically have at the, the three elementary schools, so we bring a private contractor in for that, um, and, and, you know, that, that person is, is on schedule for this week to lead up to, to next Tuesday, so. I expect we will be fully staffed, with maybe the exception of the assistant principal at the high school, um, but other than that, um, you know, there's, there's a couple of more positions to be filled, but we have, um, we have interviews ongoing this week, so.
Mr. Buckley?
I just had two, two comments, the fir- or comment of the question, the first comment is just also, please express to the custodians the school committee's appreciation for...
I will do that tomorrow, thank you.
For the grounds, because I know it is...
They're very shiny.
Yeah, I know, I know it is, I know it is quite a task to keep it up, and I know that we've...
It is.
We've, again, we, in our goals, we express that we really...
Mm-hmm.
Acknowledge the work they do and that they're overworked and understaffed, and so I think we all appreciate the work they do.
I will make sure that they know that tomorrow, thank you.
Um, and then, and again, that they're one of the priorities to try to work on in the future, um...
And we make that known, by the way, we, we are, we are very open with them about where the committee stands and, and, and its annual goals, and, and that this is not new this year, I mean, we, we, we're very open with them and tell them that...
Yeah.
You know, we understand, it's just it's a matter of priorities at that point when we get into the winter and we start hammering through the budget, so.
And then the, the only other, the question is, in your, in your newsletter, you mentioned the one-to-one, um, I know we got, I know we were able to get some additional funds by, you know, the help of some of the local representatives.
Yes.
Mr. Webster, um, when will those funds be available, and will it, I assume it's not going to mean two years, get it i- in a couple days, i- it's only gonna be one additional grade this year, is the goal for the year afterwards to potentially do more than one grade at a time, or, I mean, what, how would that extra money be applied to...
Sure.
With the rollout?
Yep, so, and I think, I don't, if, if you didn't see the transcript Thursday, we spoke, so, uh, Maureen Doherty did a nice interview with Brad Jones and I, unfortunately, Mr. Webster wasn't available to, to be there last Monday, but what we spoke about was very specifically, and by the way, those funds became available on Tuesday from the state, so, um, Representative Jones has been very good about staying in touch with me since we first met last October, to talk about these, the, the potential for, um, special appropriations, and he reached out to me after our meeting on Monday, because he left that meeting saying that he would do a check-in and see where things would be, I believe it was released on Tuesday, I think it was the next day.
So, yes, so the, it's gonna flow through the, the DESE's grants system, so on Tuesday, the applications were released, so we're sort of filling out the application and submitting that, so then you would then draw down the funds kind of as you're ready to expend and and so forth, so those, I think we're, we're getting ready to submit those, that would allow us to start drawing the funds down.
And, and, and we do not anticipate accessing those funds for, I would say, at least a couple or three months, because the idea is that, because we're, so, the, the current, the incoming grade seven students are all getting their Chromebooks this Thursday, okay, or at least that's when the bulk of them will come, you know, depending upon family availability, so that was originally the plan. So with that, with that, grade seven and eight have their Chromebooks now, okay, 'cause we're in year two. The additional funds had always been earmarked for advancing one more grade, but what we typically do is we do a pilot year, the year prior to the students receiving the Chromebooks, the students and the teachers, and we do a year of professional development with their use. We're not able to do that necessarily here, because we don't want to delay the rollout in grade nine, but what we've, what we, what we shared with the staff in grade, uh, the grade nine teachers at the high school before they went on summer vacation, was that there was the likelihood that these funds would be avail- made available, and if that were to happen, that this is what we would do, and we would pilot and do the PD in a, in a semester, kind of a condensed period, so from, say, September to January, September to December. Since the money has been awarded, the high school principal has communicated out to the staff that that now is the plan, and I think my, my article speaks to that, both in the transcript and in the, in the newsletter, um, so that's our plan right now, is we, we want to do the PD, we want to do the, you know, get them in the hands of people, um, with the professional development happening in the fall, and then the expectation, again, these are soft deadlines, but the expectation is by the second semester, January twentieth or thereabouts, um, they would be functioning in the same way as if they, uh, as if it was ju- uh, September of twenty nineteen.
So the next, so the end of the year, seventh, eighth, and ninth would have Chromebooks, and presumably the following year it would go to...
So...
Seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth?
Correct.
We can get it again for next year?
Correct, right, the ninth graders that are getting the mid-year this year would advance to grade ten, eight would move to nine, seven would move to eight, and the new seventh graders, so in September of twenty nineteen, okay, just about a year from now, the, the Chromebooks would be in the hands of all students in grades seven, eight, nine, and ten, whereas we originally thought that that would be seven, eight, and nine, so through the, through that special appropriation that Representative Jones and, and, and Senator Ta were, were helpful in achieving, we're, we were able to advance the, the program a year. The key to this, and I've been, I think, pretty pointed about this, and, and, you know, we will, we will, we will, we will express this again in front of the Capital Improvements Planning Committee, is that when you make a request like Representative Jones made on our behalf, the more we can identify a kind of a matching fund from the community, the greater chance is that the fund will, will be made by the state.
So it's not like they can take...
We're not looking to replace this, we will still be asking for our sixty thousand dollar appropriation for the Capital Improvements Planning Committee for fiscal year twenty. So it was a big, and I'm glad you brought it up, because I, I probably was remiss in not speaking about it here, but I guess I, I felt like it was white public in the paper, but, you know, Representative Jones, Mel Webster, you know, was the one that, back in October of, of twenty seventeen, um, spoke with me about, you know, it might be nice to see if we can have a conversation with Brad Jones, about how do we, how do we benefit as a community from, um, this kind of a special appropriation, and to his credit, Brad came right in, we met, and in January I had in his hands two ideas that are the two that ultimately got funded, the school safety and security initiatives and, and technology, and asked him, did this,